Jerry?
Good evening, everyone.
We're on set, Jerry.
Yep.
It's our friend now.
So, it means 6:30, I open this meeting of the Plumpton Department Selecting on Monday, February 10. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered official public document. So, welcome, everyone. I'm Mark Russo, Vice Chair in the absence of Christine Joy tonight, of the Acting Chair tonight. And maybe why don't we, as a starting point, just go around the table and say who we are? So, I did say who I was, and maybe went to affiliation.
I'm Mike Lemieux, I'm on the Finance Committee.
My name is Kevin Ora, I'm the Fire Chief in Duxbury and Department Head of the Rock, and here to discuss some plans of relief.
I'm Molly, I'm the Director of the Regional Communication Center.
Stephen Lewis, Finance Committee.
I'm on the Fire Finance Committee.
Hi, Robert, the Captain's at Duxbury Fire and also with the Rock.
I'm Daniel Sides. I'm a Starfield lawyer.
Haven't heard that in 20 years.
It's been about four.
Glad you said it on TV, now.
That's so true.
It is. Matt Clancy, Chris Martin.
Who's Danny, he's town administrator.
Can I transfer a second? So, welcome, everyone. So, the main topic tonight, the recent regional dispatches, the new fees. I think we had just a couple housekeeping things, or have we haven't done?
We have some, if you want to hold them.
Yeah, let's hold them for the end. So, hopefully this won't take too long. You know, FinCon's already been meeting for an hour, and I know that that's where people have been to go to. So, we'll jump right in. The topic tonight is regional dispatch fees, the new fees, for Little Town Plumpton, seemed pretty darn high. So, we wanted to meet with you all to get a better sense of where that came from. I think there's been generally a particular emphasis on looking at how the numbers were assessed, and there's some particular questions about the call volume. Seems like maybe the first step here might be to have the Duxbury people give us a little background, and then open it up for questions from the FinCon and the board and select.
Sure. Well, on behalf of the town and the Duxbury Fire Department and the Regional Communication Center, thank you for having us. As you know, I have with me Mike Mahoney, who's the Regional Old Colony Communications Center's Director. Prior to that, Captain Reddick here, who's an administrative day captain, pretty much handled the early days of the Rock. And along with myself and Chief Clancy, when he was chief in Duxbury, we kind of created that thing. So, what I do, what I thought I'd do is, if it's all right, is Rod's just going to give a little backdrop to how we got to where we are, and then I'll turn it over to Mike, and he can really delve into the numbers.
Sure. Now, Mike's on. So, six or seven years ago, we had a lot of games with your town, especially with Chief Dillon, who came to us with a lot of his issues that he had with the current dispatch before, or with us. One of them was that we would be in dispatch by the state police, and he felt that the town of Plumpton wasn't a priority. The state police had their own men and women to deal with, as opposed to Plumpton. So, anything that was going on with the state police, Plumpton wasn't a priority. If there was a storm, you were put on your own to handle your own dispatch. If there were police incidents, it's the same thing. So, his priority was for us to make sure that we're there, we're that safety net for the police officers and firefighters. So, the police officers had learned to do a lot of the jobs on their own. They didn't rely on state police. They did their own car stops, their data entry. But he wanted to make sure that our dispatchers, every time that was done, that would be watching over them, that would be doing the entries. The same thing with building checks. They do building checks all day long. They do a lot of that card, or the data entry on their own with computers. But our dispatchers watch over that stuff. So, when they came to us, those were some of the priorities that he had. The difference between us and state police is you're an integral part of our dispatch operation. So, take, for instance, last Friday. Last Friday was a busy day for us. All four towns were jumping. Normally, that afternoon, we'd run four dispatchers. But because of the call volume, we increased to having 10 people there that day to cover the call volume, not only in Plumpton, but our other three towns. So, I think those are some of the big differences that you see from what you, where you came from, to where you are now.
You've just mentioned the money that Plumpton has seen by becoming part of the regional.
Sure. Absolutely. So, becoming regional, you know you're open to a new bucket of money, something that isn't open to neighboring towns that aren't regional. So, some of the things that this town has seen, because we're regional, off the top of my head, a fall system at the police station, mobile data terminals, upgrades to repeater equipment, better communications equipment. You know, one of the big ones that isn't available to a lot of smaller towns, I'll just give you an example, is to break it down simply. If a police officer's on the car stop, the way a lot of radio systems work, when they're calling in the plate, the dispatcher will answer, the dispatcher will start coming back with information. If that police officer becomes in trouble, someone starts shooting at him, he's not able to key that radio up and get information, dispatch that he's in trouble. Last year, I think it was between last year and the year before, we spent $800,000 on communications to improve things like that for both officer and firefighter safety. Before you came to the Rock, if a police officer was in trouble, he wasn't able to hit a button on his radio to get a man-down signal to dispatch. That wasn't available, wasn't available for the fire department. Those were all safety things that we wrote grants for and enhanced our equipment so that we could...
So, did you supply the equipment to Plumpton?
We, as a backhaul of it all, yes. But we supplied the mobile data terminal, so the computers and all the backbone.
Okay. So, you've gotten a tremendous amount of product for the longing, and that's not only shared in the fact that you were paying zero for so many years, but also that development, that infrastructure that needed to be improved for the region. And dollar cents-wise, I think, Mike, I'll yield to you, and you can pick it up from there, but I think there's a dollar amount that we can see that they've...
Yeah, I mean, all told, the Rock's seen $8 million in development funding. I mean, that's to include our construction project. But for Plumpton alone, I didn't even put every bit that the town received, but I think everybody had gotten one of these packets. The page in there with development projects, $193,000, and that's just some of the big-ticket items that I grabbed. It's not itemizing each of them.
So, when you look at that, that annual fee, I just want you to think of it as a big picture, and some of the infrastructure improvements you've seen with that. Originally, when Chief Dillon expressed an interest, and when Chief Clancy and I were attending those seminars that were paid for by 911 consultant to look into regionalization, Plumpton and Duxbury were the two towns that were left standing, everybody else kind of walked away, and we said, "Yeah, this is good for us." Not only because of that carrot of that extra money that the state provided under 911, but also we could become more efficient with our own people. And so, as Plumpton joined that, those early years, we saw no increase in staffing. So, that's the reason why it was zero. But as your town, the community, has gotten busier, both on the fire and the police side, and your demographics in town, your call volume has increased. And I'll let Mike walk through the numbers of what you got as far as volume, and how you wanted to go from there.
Yeah, I know there was some concern about how the call volume was calculated. If you look at the main page, we have you listed as 15,000 call volume. There's truly no perfect metric that we can use to measure how much impact any one community has on the dispatch center, because there are so many shared resources. But one that we do have is every item that gets logged into our records management system is just a tick on your tally. So, we use the same measurement for all of the towns, and that's what we come up with. So, Duxbury's got 32,000, Halifax 12,000, Plumpton 15,000, and Rochester 12,000. So, I actually backed out a couple of thousand after speaking to Chief Clancy, because he had, way back when, prior to being regional, the police officers have to do a pre-check each day when they come in, pre-shift check. So, I removed all of that.
What does that mean, pre-shift check?
So, the chief can probably explain it a little bit better, but it's one item that I could agree with the chief, that the dispatch truly has nothing to do with. It's the officer gets here, he makes sure his car starts, and his rifle's in the car, and, you know, he has all of his equipment that he needs, and he doesn't call any of that in to dispatch. But it does get logged into the records management system.
Because it's going over a data terminal?
Yes, over the mobile data terminal. So, I backed those out of the total. But the change in percentage was negligible, even by backing out those 2,000 calls.
And the concern we have is that it just doesn't feel right. We're less than half the population of Halifax.
Yep.
And we've got more volume, and we're concerned that, is there something going on in the volume that we can correct that wouldn't affect the dispatch?
So, a couple of things, let me just... Your infrastructure changed when, and the numbers weren't perfect, and I'll just express this briefly. So, when Chief Dillon, Plumpton came over, the numbers weren't perfect, because you didn't have a very good records management system at the time. Understandably so, we guesstimated where you guys would be. And as Chief Bessori increased staff and became a round-the-clock, 24/7 organization, and you started to see an uptick in traffic on 44, a major highway, and as well Cisco coming online, those were three of the things that I saw that pushed your run count up. And as we looked at that run count and started to adjust for it, we were tending to catch some revenue stream increases from state 911, which would always kind of cover the expense that we had. But we've gotten to the point now where Plumpton really is a very busy community. I don't think you guys realize how much you guys do. You do a tremendous amount, posts on the fire, EMS, and law enforcement. You have major roadways that intersect with this town, and those, all those incidences take dispatcher action, and that's what, that's what the cost is associated with. So, I think Mike was previously had discussions with Liz, that we were, we know we needed to get to that number eventually, and in fact, we increased it this past year to 50,000, and then by our calculations, and to figure on growth, that that 200,000 number was what we had believed was the accurate number based on that run count.
When you get a call, do you code it so that you know what's going on?
Yes.
Do you supply that to us?
I could.
Yep.
So, one of the biggest ticket items in that category are building checks and motor vehicle stops. The town of Plumpton does far more of those than any of our other communities combined. It's something the chief had started years ago, and Chief Dillon continued with. The traffic enforcement is very strict in town, and the building checks are something that are done religiously. The guys are out several times a shift checking buildings. And as Rob said, when you were with the state police, some of that was just kind of handled on its own. Now that you remember the Rock, that's all monitored. Every time an officer's out checking a building, they're either calling it in on the radio, or even if they don't call it in on the radio, the second they do anything on their MDT that says they're out of the car, or they're checking a building, it pops up in the dispatch. So, then the dispatcher will monitor them, have the radio on, follow the log, make sure that officer clears, they're safe, and then back out on patrol, whether it's a quick ride around the Dunnett School, a quick ride around this campus, or whatever other umpteen buildings they check. The gas station, they check, you know, church, town square, every single thing in town gets a check at some point throughout the course of their shift.
I'm assuming that's going on in the other towns, too, right?
It is, but not to the extent, to be honest. And part of that is driven by the calls-for service, where some of the other towns are being called out, specific calls more frequently than just generalized patrol, as Plumpton has. So, that's not to say you're not getting called out for just as many overdoses, or domestic violence, or medical emergencies as the other communities, but...
I think, Mike, I'd like to, you know, you and I talked just, I told you what was coming.
Yep.
You know, I get the concept that they are, that they're there and sort of monitoring the activity. When you talk of 9,000, when you take the building, the commercial building checks, directed patrols, and the housewatch checks, it's 9,000. So, that's a massive number. My guys, they do those soup to nuts. They're doing them on their laptop, probably most, the vast majority of the time, you guys don't even know what happened, because they're just logging them in.
No, that's not true. They know every time someone, because of the audio.
Well, I see the dent, but yeah. But realistically, so our guys are loading that, populating that. So, you know, I think that that's, we have to get, we have to, you know, come to some kind of balance there. Because those are, I mean, you know, what's the number for Rochester? Is it 12,000?
Call volume?
Yeah. So, just our building checks is 9,000. So, comparing us to Rochester is a, there's got to be a, we've got to come up with some other, I know it's not easy, but we've been trying to do this for a long time.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, even with, so even if you take the 50,000 and just cut it in half arbitrarily, cut it in half, so you're down to 7,500, you still account for 10%, which is still $165,000, $170,000, which is far more than the 50. So, regardless of how we can matriculate an accurate count, or come up with a metric that all the towns agree with, the fact of the matter remains, it's going to go up, unfortunately. It's just...
But I think that, that theory is going to prevent us from ballooning by more of the officer actions and less dispatcher activity, and you can kind of keep that number in check. And keep in mind, if, you know, always remember that number, if you were running something on your own, you'd be in the 400, $500,000 range. And I think Mike did a spreadsheet on that, and I think you have that in your packet. So, I want you to, 200, to go from 0 to 50 to 200,000, yeah, is a lot of money. I get that, I see that. Should we have started that creep-up sooner than later? Probably should have, and that's my fault. But at the end of the day, you're getting a robust, redundant, good service for 200K, and most towns can't touch that for 500, $600,000. I don't know what you have for a number there, if you were to run it on your own, and then you wouldn't be at all successful with any of the development grants, any of the infrastructure buildup, and all that other stuff. Now, can we negotiate a price to step up to that amount? Yeah, I think I can work with you on that to get there. But at the end of the day, 200,000 is really cheap for what you're getting, and I get that. You were at zero, and now you're paying 200. And I know the town, you know, doesn't have a lot of tax base, I get that.
Yeah.
But like I said, you know, early numbers were kind of skewed, because we really had not very good tracking, at least on the fire side of the house. You've improved your fire department, where they're going to more calls, because they're there and available, as opposed to just law enforcement investigating something and fire not rolling. That's a big difference I've seen, and for the better. And your ambulances uptick, I think we see a 10% increase across the board annually with the ambulance transport. So, your volume's there, your traffic stops are there, you've got, you know, a big industry, and I don't mean to keep harping on Cisco, but you do a lot of calls for Cisco, inspections, investigations, that type of thing, fire department alarms, and so on. So, I don't think that number's too far off. You do a tremendous amount of traffic stops, you're very heavy in traffic enforcement.
One other thing to look at also is your ambulance. Like the chief said, when you became full-time, before you were full-time, you were in all those mutually run cards for your neighbors, and now you are. So, you're going to Carver on a regular basis, you're going to Kinks on a regular basis. Those were never, those weren't, that didn't happen in the past.
Well, we were Carver. All these other towns had full-time as well, like, and two or three things from my perspective.
Sure.
One, we know we got a great service. When we did that tour, when you started years ago, I mean, it's clear, it's really professional and much better than we can do, and really, really appreciate it. At the same time, we truly are a little tiny town, and a jump from 50,000 to 200,000, you know, for this town, that's a huge hit.
Sure.
Really pretty unexpected. So, we would hope for something, at worst, a little more gradual, and a little more kind of in line with inflation and all that. But I think the big piece is, and I suppose it's always the problem with regionalization, is deciding how to assess for each town, and of course, we go through this endlessly with Silver Lake.
Sure.
But, you know, doing it on the basis of call volume, it's just all out of proportion, which to the size of the town, doesn't feel like it makes much sense. And, I mean, even if these things are ticking into your system, it's a whole bunch different that someone did a house call, a house check, as versus, you know, some catastrophe that's going to take a lot of time. So, I think in general, we feel like some other means, rather than call volume, is the way to do the assessment that gets it more in line with the size of town that we are.
So, I'm fine with...
Give a weighted value to the incidents, go through the incident codes.
So, I'm fine with that, but I just caution you, because if we adjust the way we calculate things for Plumpton, we have to adjust the way we calculate it for everyone. So, there is a potential there that it swings the wrong way.
For another community.
Rochester could drop lower, and now Plumpton holds a bigger chance.
And let me just say where that formula system came from. That was, and I'm sure you have it in your archives here somewhere, when Plumpton participated in that hired consultant from 911 who studied the eight communities, the gentleman formulated that formula, basically, to say, you know, we all asked him, "Hey, how do you bill for this?" You know, one way to do it is, "How many employees do I think I need to hire to cover the town of Plumpton?", and then figure that salary range, and then add 40% for fringe benefits, for benefits, and then a 10% buffer to guide me is one way. Or the other way is to look at volume, and he suggested strongly, we looked at volume. Volume was based on population and call volume, run count, because that's interaction between a dispatcher and a person in the street. I agree with you. You know, an officer using an MDT, even though we're there watching him to make sure he's safe, it's not an effort on our part where we have to communicate something and take a telephone call or something like that. So, if we were to take a look at that number, and...
It would help if we had like six buckets, I'm just picking up a number.
Sure.
So that, and we could see all the towns. Because one of the things that would drop out, if we're doing something that we could revise, maybe this is an opportunity. I don't know, a few people come back and make recommendations around, you know, how to be more efficient, or et cetera. But right now, we've got an overall number, and it doesn't, it doesn't feel right, but if the buckets fall out, and it looks like that's the way it's got to be, then fine, that's the way it's got to be.
Sure.
We just, in the end, we have to go back and explain to the Finance Committee, and then we have to explain it to our residents.
Sure. So, you're looking for like a matrix that shows where your run counts are, you know, basically break down, you know, fire calls and police calls?
I guess the major, I'm not sure if I... You've got to help me, Adam.
Yeah, I think, well, you know, when this first came out, I said, "Okay, what, you know, how can I segregate the, a lot of that officer-initiated stuff?" But I said, "I'm not going to have two records management systems in my building." You know, we've got a great system that we've had for a long time, and it predates going over to Duxbury. We had the IMC product prior to that, and that's what they have there, so we had that nice uniformity. But, you know, the other argument can be made is that we're paying for them to be listening 24/7 anyhow. So, the point that they're watching over while they're doing these building checks, they're there anyways. We're paying them to be listening to that radio 24/7, so it's, so you can sort of carve that a couple of different ways. I think that, you know, and the last thing I'm going to do is tell my people to slow down. We're getting, you're getting, you know, from an operational discipline standpoint, they are the most disciplined in this group. You know, they're falling through on their, on the expectations we have them. But, and I really think that we might be able to look at as a weighted system, where a building check or something to that effect is half a point. 20, you know, and then to break down the various types of responses, and maybe a certain other type of response is, you know, we calculate it as two points, and we come up with a point system, something to that effect. And you're right, maybe it doesn't change anything, but I think that would make us feel a hell of a lot better about the, you know, those 9,000 numbers that are sort of being, what we feel are being treated just the same as a domestic disturbance response, a car crash, and one of those other towns. So...
Is there any hope that other towns might come on and that we'll share the burden?
So, that was my next point. That's where we are today, in all honesty. So, new guidelines have come out for development grants, and it's tremendous news for towns that have ever considered joining a regional. Basically, the carrot and the stick, since the carrot has gotten very big now, they're really incentivizing the idea of regionalization, which is going to drive more towns to join. And the Rock is particularly in a place where we already have Hanson signed on, they're coming, that's a done deal. So, you can see many of the spreadsheets I have here included Hanson on it, because we know that's where we're headed. We also have several other towns that are knocking on the door and want to see things, because when our new building's done, it's truly going to be the latest and greatest.
Can you double it?
Yeah, we can more than double. We built the new building to handle an estimated population of 100,000.
Is that correlated with where the old one was?
Yes.
Close mic?
It's directly on top of it.
Oh.
Yeah.
Is it an addition?
Yeah, we ripped off the second floor and put a bigger one on top.
Yeah, so we've gone from five dispatch seats to 15. We have several towns, like I said, already knocking on the door, and that's the beauty of this whole concept. We're there now. With Hanson, you'll start to see the increase in the overall operations budget will be less than your decrease in percentage, if you get what I'm saying, if I'm explaining that correctly. So, when we add another town, that difference is even more substantial. So, for random numbers sake, the operating budget were to go up another half a million, but the drop in your percentage drops your overall assessment, because you're only paying 13% of 3 million, as opposed to, you know, 25% of 2 million.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there is a benefit to that, additional towns. And as Mike said, there's other towns that are interested. There's one that's porting us now, I don't know which way they'll slide. But the, and the other thing that we could take a look at, too, is I think, is maybe I can get together with Liz, and you guys can discuss after we leave, you know, what's a number we can hit? And we'll furnish that data for you, you can see. But it's more than 50, and if 200,000 isn't the number based on the data that we provided, somewhere in between that. And then how do we get there? And how can we get there together?
I think that would be helpful.
And I think that's where we need to, for the solution for this discussion, you know, is where we need to be.
I would just stress, I, we surely want to pay our fair share.
Yeah.
It just doesn't feel like this is our fair share.
And just remember about the school committee stuff. So, one town, one vote, not like the way it's, it happens, is part of the region, is as far as when we do stuff together. Plumpton stands there as strong as Duxbury or anybody else with your input from your police chief and your fire chief. And again, we don't have students, we have call volume, we have run count, and we could shave it and look at just 911 calls.
Good, I wish it was 2633.
What's that?
I wish it was 2633.
Well, and then you don't include the business calls, like he just said. And so, you know, we could look at that. But generally, when we looked at those other numbers, they generally all came out about the same. And having said that, yeah, we'll certainly go back and look at a weighted system, and that weighted system might, like I said, go wrong for somebody else and be great for someone else. But based on the consultant's report and his recommendation, we based it on call volume and population, and that was a number, and that was a percentage of the overall budget.
All right. So, we, the action, or go ahead, no? FinCon?
I'm good.
Good.
So, I think I'm hearing two or three action steps. You guys are going to look at a weighted system, or a possibility of that. We are going to work with Liz to sort of find some number in between that seems mutually okay, continue the conversation that way. Any other steps we're working on right now? I'd still like a little breakdown to understand, you know...
Yeah, and I think with that weighted system, that we're going to try and get back to you with, that that would should have that, those answers for you, so you can see comparably maybe from town to town, where you are. And then, and then the other thing is, is that we'll, you know, we'll look to alternative sources with this new formula that 911 has come out with, to see if that can help us at all.
Okay, great. Excellent.
Okay, great.
Excellent.
I mean, is that pretty much...
Appreciate you coming out.
Absolutely. I mean, I think it goes without saying, we all want this to work.
Absolutely.
You know?
We know we're in a good, a good regional solution. We just want to make sure that we feel comfortable.
No, you're doing your due diligence, which I would be doing the same if I was sitting on the other side of the table. I'm the one that comes in and asks for money all the time. I get it.
Any last words, anyone?
Mike did a great job, and it's a fantastic job.
Guys, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you have a good night, and we'll check you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll email you. Thank you. Pleasure.
Sorry.
I know how you feel.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's a good one. I do it with the heart. That's great.
I already shook your hand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
So...
Absolutely. Thank you.
This'll be good.
Yeah.
So just reminding everyone, the video's still on, so beware.
All right. Take care. Have a good night.
What was that?
All right. I don't know if we have anything left.
Just the appointments.
Oh, we have some appointments, okay.
Cultural.
Thank you, Ping Kong.
Thank you.
Here, I'll come over here.
Okay.
So we have one here for Scott DiNacola, full-time patrolman through June 30th, 2020.
So I make a motion that we appoint Scott as described.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have Elizabeth Wesley to the cultural council until June 30th, 2020.
Wow, great.
Hey, I'll do that too. I'll do that too. Another person on the cultural council.
We may end up needing to take you up on that. What do we have, three, four?
Actually, I have volunteered to do that as well.
Would you do it?
I'll do it.
I'll serve with them, put me on.
So...
Well, I think we already have four, right? All together?
Well, I'm not doing it.
Yeah, but we need five.
You know, oh, good. All right.
So we'll do that. Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Nick.
All right, so I make a motion, we appoint Elizabeth Wesley as described.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Then could you make a motion for Nathaniel Sides as described through June 30th, and you can sign at later dates? Then M. Elizabeth Randall through June 30th. This is all cultural council.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have Heather Sando through June 30th, 2020, cultural council.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then Jennifer Zanoli to the cultural council through June 30th.
Wow, that's good.
Our recruitment worked.
Very nice. So I make a motion for Jennifer as well.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The power of social media.
All right.
Anything else?
That'll do it. That's a wrap.
Anything, Bree?
Good night.
Yay. All right. So we thank everyone, wish everyone a good week. We'll be back in two weeks, meeting adjourned.
Good. Thank you.
[music]